Well, let's get this started, yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just in time. Everybody, let's do this. Approve the meeting minutes for February twenty fourth.
I make the motion to approve the minute.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I will make a motion to approve our bills for March.
Is that reasonable?
All in favor? What's next?
Attorney Fendt.
We'll tell Garrett speaking because he was more than welcome.
Yeah, so the Bingham County area, this is what we talked about last month, you know, about the sheriff and the prosecutor of Bingham County had an opportunity to do that. So we'll, they had a few things they wanted to change, but nothing that's substantial. And the way that we're implementing it is obviously the normal state code type citations being, you know, certain be, I mean, those kind of things. Obviously, the county just handles them all, and then go to the county prosecutors. If they're city code violation type, like middle maintenance things, or if we get into some of those aspects, then normally that would be Brian, sign the citation, they'll serve it. And then those would get triggered to come to me, so that the county's not prosecuting those types of violations. The only issue logistically, if they're trying to figure out what's going to be easy, whether they have a sticker on the ticket or something, you may follow any different, but anyway, those city code things come to me. It was the city attorney prosecuting, I prosecuted Michael Chellian and stuff anyway, so it's not going to be a big deal for me. We're not going to have that many, like, anywhere from thirty to sixty-five every Tuesday. So to add another citation or two once in a while isn't a big deal. But anyways, we're working through that, and so we should have that finalized next month. But we didn't need, I think, everything until July. Kind of where that's at.
Excellent.
Let's see. Right, we approve that.
Um, what's kind of what he's been talking about, and it sounded like he has some opinion?
Well, so I mean, most of your, most of the cities, they have some sort of liability permit. You know, so if somebody comes in and digs up to a particular water line or sewer line, that they, you know, some specifications on how they're supposed to put that back. You know, last month, there was Gil at Gasoline, wasn't it? So it was set up really bad. You know, you wouldn't have any jurisdiction over private property on how to have to distribute between them in the whole order. As far as any loadways, you know, if you want something like that.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. You know, so like, for example, they have differing specifications depending on what type of load it is. This is a main road, and they have to backfill it with a foot of sand or whatever the water sewer line they put in, and then it's a one bag concrete that they put in, so, things like that. So the question for tonight, I guess, is do you want me to put something together? Kind of off of an Aberdeen Black for example, or?
I think so.
Yes, that's fair.
Do they have a similar road structure, is what we have?
Well, so Aberdeen is a lot more similar than you.
Well, let's see.
You, obviously, mine's got varying degrees, uh, those stuff.
Yeah. So, I put some stuff together from having more construction than Class A gentlemans here in contract in California, so. Okay. Basically, uh, I forgot my glasses, I gotta, good thing, look, this is printed big enough. Any person, company, corporation, or entity who digs trenches or excavates on the city property, including city streets and/or rightaways, shall ensure that set excavation trenches or diggings are compacted to state highway specification requirements and codes. Any and all asphalt pavement concrete placed on city property, including streets and/or rightaways, shall be a minimum of four inches thick. Asphalt pavement, asphalt and pavement shall be installed in two inch lifts. Sewers. Sewer manholes shall have a top block of forty-eight inches square and twelve inches thick. That's a piece of concrete that inform as pouring around all the top blocks that are in the street, either in the street or in the rightaway. I have two different specifications because they're a little bit different on it. Oh, before I get down to the top blocks. So for top blocks out of the street but on city rightaway, the surface, the top of it, shall be tapered from the top of the metal casing to the edge of the top block with a slope of one to two inches, still maintaining twelve inches thickness. For top blocks in the street, the, uh, the surface of the top block shall be tapered from two inches below the metal casing to one to two inches lower. That allows them to put asphalt over to make a nice smooth thing. Basically, that top block then supports the asphalt. Instead of just being four inches, it supports the asphalt, so it doesn't settle. For top blocks, uh, for, um, cleanouts, cleanouts shall have a top block of thirty-six inches square, twelve inches thick. Because usually, top cleanouts come up at an angle, so you want a, uh, a top block that'll support, you know. So in the rightaway, same thing, I know, same things for rightaway and street, as far as the surface slope on it. Water valves. So any company comes in, works on one of the city's water valves or whatever, water valves up the top block of thirty-six inches square and twelve inches thick, same parameters. And that would, uh, all that around will definitely make sure that there aren't problems. Where they come in, someone's going to add a sewer tie-in, put a top on city property, that's protect, that's set up, compaction is done to state specifications, like, um, they just have a rain guard. Our attorney stated about, you know, twelve inches of sand or whatever is they put in, and, yeah, something like that. Because I did notice that when they were doing the widening between Shelley and up there where, you know, or, um, this, this next signal up going today, Idaho Falls, they were actually out there with the, um, compaction testing, doing tests to make sure, as they did their lifts, everything was compacted to a state specification. And that's what we need to make them do on the trenches, because they just have to be backfill it. There's going to be voids in there, and as, when you get the first rains and stuff, and the water gets down in there, it's going to start softening it, and as more rains get on, it's also, it's going to fill those voids, and you also, it's going to drop. Like it's doing, and I've already put a bucket of little rock on top of mine already, and it's still dropping. So, there's a copy for the city, and then one for the seats that I wrote up there just. That's, yeah, my recommendations, having worked it for ten years.
So I'm just curious, like, how liable was the company without? Like, if you didn't have?
Well, you want to have roads, so there's some specifications, so you don't get to go battle them.
I just think, like, I don't think our roads are up to these specifications.
Well, of course.
No, 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 but that is, that is for forty-two, because we do get our roads up, but.
From here on out, it can be, like, when the repair is done, so that it lasts.
Right. You know, because right now, yeah, the roads aren't up to that thickness, but maybe working the road, you want to make sure that it doesn't sink in the river, which may still happen, with the paved, um, eight foot square or ten foot square there in front of my house. It may settle next year. Okay. But, uh, for liability, liability stuff, if a company, once this is in place, once a company comes in and doesn't do that, the city can make them come back, or the city can hire a contractor and then backfill the original for the cost of having someone else come in and fix it right. Okay. Thanks.
All right.
Thank you both.
Yeah.
I'd be curious how, how, of course, I mean, what Idaho's, what you come up with, it's similar?
Yeah, well, like I said, no, like, you know, totally with Aberdeen as much, you know, obviously, they have something that's very similar to these kind of. The markets, obviously, depend on the type of road. They have different standards, sort of, like, rural or major or, you know, like, obviously, you guys, all yours are, you know, more rural. You know, so you want to have something that protects your roads, but then you make it too difficult to drink, you want to go out there and inspect them.
I was just, when I worked at H and K for a little while, I, that's nowhere near what we were doing. And we were doing Crowley Road out there, that improvement, and that's way excessive compared to what we were doing out there. And, of course, it's a different area, I'm sure they had different.
But like, I mean, you know, someone's going up Nine Hill Falls, that's exactly what they did in Nine Hill Falls, when they were doing the improvements there around, um, with your, and, um, Seventeenth.
Your Jensen's here.
Hello?
Did you have something to say?
Oh, I just want to introduce myself. Most of you know me, but I'm trying to handle the city councils and just inform them that I'm running for county commissioner in Orangeville. And so.
I was trying to decide why I knew your name, and they had mentioned the fire district meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, anyways, I did, because I was, I knew your name, I couldn't think of why, you know, why.
So it's early stages, I think. Mark Bear's going around, and I prefer Steve, and it's awesome.
So who's the best candidate?
Okay. You know, I, I've had a lot of complaints that are in the committee, doesn't, not the lessons of the county commissioner's office. And so, there's been a lot of people calling and asking if I could please run.
You're a sucker.
I'm behind this, I'm. But, you know, it's a good, it's a good deal, I'm learning a lot. Not very few people's happy with anybody. But, but anyway. What I was wondering about is, everybody I've talked to in the different cities, the county and the cities have, don't have much communication back and forth. But I think that would be a good deal, either to have the mayors come to the county commissioner's office, or one or two commissioners come to a meeting like this and kind of just, not promising anything, but at least listen to your needs of what maybe the county can do to, because we're all part of the academy, but sometimes we run pretty independently, because there's no communication. Just a problem. Okay?
Well, from my perspective, so I represented most of the cities for about ten years now, and it does have a flow a little bit. And I'll tell you, years ago, there was a lot more communication and things, and then they really got, you know, had to get, they really got into these huge budget freezes. That's really what it's spot. And then with the jail project going on, right now, being a county, it's better than dying anywhere, they don't have to, because they're trying to get that done. So I think that, between COVID and the jail project, has been the huge hurdle. But in all the cities I deal with, it has had to blow, you know, to one, you know, a lot less than the ones they don't.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of been the.
I went and met with Stacy Hasco up there in Shelley. He's a, they don't have much communication like the county. Can you tell me your name?
Tom Garrett, San Antonio.
San Antonio.
Yeah, so I am representing most of the cities, but county, but all the other, the mall.
Okay.
So I go with county officials quite often.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it sounds good. I need you to answer one of those.
This are the upcoming elections?
Uh, we, well, I think this is the election. They'll be primary, and as it is in a lot of places in Idaho, there's no Democrats that run over. Not many, so.
It's just, yeah, so it's a may, may election, is it?
And so. Usually, may elections, it, because unless there's a riot in or something for the fall, but I guess that can always happen.
So there's three people running, and how many did?
Yeah, just one.
Just one?
Yeah. So Mark Bear, he, uh, farmed most of his life, or grew up most of his life up on Tabor Road, at the end of Tabor Road. And they sold their farm and moved in, and then he moved in down to birth. And then he ran for county commissioner up this way, but not very many people know that he's here, because they still associate with. And his brother was Steve, who married, was the state senator. But he was a good guy, I just think that, um, he's been in approximately twenty-two years, and I think things always should be, should be changed. We'll see if I can pre-expose this. Okay?
Your turn.
We're hearing that a lot, I agree.
Yeah.
Let's hear the maintenance report.
Well, first off, can I, does anybody know how our water system work? You know, are you familiar with it at all? Has the guy ever explained it to you before?
I was gonna say, uh, it's hard to describe, uh, it's hard to complain, so.
So let me, let me explain some things real quick. We have a big well, it's out there by Russell's, that's well number three. Then we have our main well, it's number two, right over here. There's three pumps over there. And there's a ten horse, a thirty horse, and a forty horse. They're supposed to communicate with a unit, it's called a SCADA unit. It's controlled by a computer just on the other side of this wall. And we can go in and see how everything's running, turn one off, turn another one on, as we need to. They're supposed to run automatically. They're just supposed to, the ten horse cars are supposed to run nonstop, and it needs help. The thirty horse is supposed to kick up, help keep the pressure, help keep the demand. If that can't keep up, then there's, and then, everything hit the fan pump, it's a forty horse pump, and it's, that's one other story. But none of that's working right now. So the good news is, we've been running on the thirty horse pump consistently for the last years.
Well, probably since COVID.
Five years. Nobody can tell me exactly.
I can't tell you?
It changes every time I ask. The thirty horse pump was not there when we had our last DEQ inspection, which was two and a half years ago. So what we've done in the last month is we've got the ten horsepower pump back online, and that is what's powering the water right now.
Which saves an electricity, too.
It's, it's a huge save, and it is a screaming little pump, and it, and it has kept up with everything that we've pushed it to do so far, and we haven't got into the summary yet. The downside is, we had a new drive put in for that ten horse, and it's called a variable flow drive. And it helps that pump to maintain seventy PSI, is what our city's running at. So as we, as it fluctuates, it will ramp up and ramp down and maintain that. The drive that they installed does not communicate with the SCADA unit. Only in the fact that it's running and not, I can't control it other than physically walking over there. So that's the, that's the first problem, and it's unfortunately, the, it was, that drive was bought and put in partway, however many years ago, and it is not compatible with our current SCADA unit. So that's, it's problem number one. Problem number two is, the thirty horse will run, but the drives on it have run so long at this, keeping this even pressure, and has never had to work with another pump. That's all it knows how to do. It, they cannot make it speak with the ten horse pump. Just imagine a groove in your electronics. It's worn a groove, so all it will do is maintain our seventy. So it will run, but those drives are shot. We're expecting a quote for new drives? It's not going to be cheap.
So I have a quote for that.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, they just sent me a message today, it's almost thirteen thousand dollars for a new control unit to control and speak to each other, so that they all function correctly. So, but operated from a computer here, it's another additional. You have to change the SCADA out, and it's like twenty-five thousand. So all these things have been neglected for a long time, and everything is just down to the bare bones, bare bones, barely going, and so we have a lot to fix and make out.
So ideally, what's supposed to happen is the ten horsepower is supposed to just work its little heart out. And then as it needs a little, little help, then the thirty horse is called a booster pump, and it's supposed to maintain that. Just kick out what it needs and kick off, kick out what it needs and kick off.
So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So in the irrigation world, they have VFDs, variables, speeds. Would it be cheaper to put a VFD on the forty that would just run one to, or the full force of the forty versus maintaining all?
And that is a, good, that's, that's a whole other thing.
It's into, like, codes and stuff, like, you have to have some available in case.
So the forty horse that's.
Fire, whatever.
We actually have two forty horses, there's a forty horse over in the well, three is over by Russell's. And right now, that's what we're, we're running on the ten horse, and if it can't keep up, then the big well over there kicks on, and that's a forty horse pump.
So for several years, it's been running on the thirty horse, and so they just kicked on the ten horse, and it's got a noisy bearing on it.
So it's.
It's been going on.
It's, it's working hard, and it could last a year, it could last five, it only go out tomorrow.
I'd say, or a week.
So, I mean, and then, so like I said, we have four pumps that we're concerned about. The, the forty horse that's over in well three is, is doing okay. It's probably going to need some updates, because it's twenty-five years old. Pump ten is working okay, it may need a new pump.
I think, I think we'll just get a motor, have a pair of ready.
The thirty horse needs a new drive, and the forty horse has to be completely pulled out and taken in and rebuilt. And that's our fire protection work.
So if you want to run fire, I guess.
So, so we're, we're kind of in a, we're between a rock and a hard spot.
Hard rock.
And on top of all this, uh, we are behind in some of the maintenance that was required by DEQ, which is digital flow meters in our well houses. Those are more than nine grand. I mean, we're, we're talking some serious money, and there's three of them, like, in my understanding. So I, and I'm, I'm hoping I'm getting this all, I think you're getting it, getting all straight from my little part time.
So you've been learning a lot.
I've been learning a lot, and it's.
So the all the pumps flowing to one eye under the well?
So the, the big well out at Russell's, it's a separate pipe that feeds the city. It will, it does connect the pressure over here, but it's, it feeds in separately.
I'm just wondering, so you only have five one flow meter versus?
Right now, we have the, yeah.
Part two, what do you think?
We've got, one is brand new, it's been sitting over there for.
It's not well over there?
Just not, just not programmed. That's what we just got done, and that's probably a pretty serious bill, I think that was. With all the work they've been over, I'll bet you were close to program, just, just the program.
I know, and the brother monument for that.
I was, I remember, why not?
So, so there's a guy in the woods here, and he does all the mechanical programming for a lot of these areas.
You told me it's bought into electric?
It's, no, it's driven, driven separately.
Well, through Mountain West, uh, they've been working with us and helping us, and making sure it's all taken care of slowly.
With a lot of connections.
Right now, and Mountain West is our water operator, they are our license to be here, but, so they, kind of, right now, they're.
They're liable, too.
They're liable, too, so we kind of, that's where the rock and the hard spot comes in, is because we kind of need to do what they say. They give us some options, but few options.
And there, there's an inspection coming up, is what I understand, like, in the next couple of years, but.
Yeah, and that's going to be another one. We've got a fifty gallon gallon of chlorine over there that nobody can tell us how old it is. It's, DEQ wanted it, oh, two and a half years ago when they were here. Still sit there. There's a homemade piece of pipe in there that will never pass DEQ specs. It's holding pressure, guy did a good job, it's, doesn't look that pretty, but it's holding pressure. It's not going to pass DEQ. It will, uh, so that's got to be replaced. There's, they have another, it's a, called a clay valve. It's a pop-off valve, like the ones on your water heater, that overpressures. It pops off and releases a bunch of water out behind the wellhouse. They had our pumps screaming at over eighty-five PSI, which is way too much. Never popped ones. So it's time for a rebuild on that. Yeah, they're, they're upwards of fifteen hundred to two thousand to rebuild that. So we have a lot of projects in here, and we're trying to get the, that's, and I, I'm starting with the water, because that's the one that we're dealing with right now. There's a lot of other projects that are, and as we go to the next city councils, I'll bring up more, there's, there's a lot of projects out here that have just been kind of put on the back burner there. And it needs work.
So do we, we have a sheet saying, this is a fix, this is the cost, this, this is the work.
This is all new.
All right.
So this is just in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, so that means that then, uh, the next, um, newsletter should be out there so everyone can see, hey, this is what we found wrong, this, these are the stick requirements, this is what it's going to cost for us.
Actually, Mountain West is going to go ahead and put together a letter of this that we're talking about to, it's, it's a statement to let the, the community know what's going on.
Yeah.
And why their bill's going up, and just, it, it'll be pretty good.
Yeah, it's going to be, I can, I can see it's going to have to be an ugly but necessary bill in the future time.
So, and here's the thing with that, is, um, when we were talking to Husk from Civil Life, they were saying that really our water rates and our sewer rates should both be about seventy-five dollars a piece. And he could tell when our last projects were done based on where the wages. And if there was a cost of living done over the years, that's where we would be, is that seventy-five-ish number.
Yeah.
And so as people have come in, I've kind of, you know, we've talked about rate increases, and I've warned them, there will be more probably, and why, and the simplest way that I put it is, if you're running a business, you have two, the year two thousand rates, but we're in twenty, twenty-four expenses, and it doesn't work.
Yeah, two thousand rates should, are, are based off of nineteen ninety or nineteen eighty rates.
Well, hopefully, we will, we're saving a little bit with that ten horse running. With the third, that's the other question, uh, if we have the forty horse running, the problem that we have with that is, it's a big enough pump, we get on-demand charges every month. It's a thousand dollar a month. And if we don't have to have the thirty or the forty running, that's a thousand dollar a month.
Here's, the point of that is, all winter long, that ten horsepower should be running on the thirty. So that's essentially costing the city about a thousand dollars, a lot more, just because, and so through the years, how many, how much money has been spent unnecessarily paying electric bills, run bigger, more, that doesn't need to be run. Neglect, nobody's in attention, I don't know, but we're going to solve this problem. I think I'm going to shift some of the funds, we're going to do that, and get some of these problems fixed now, and that's what part of. And that's what part of goals this year. Let's fix our water system and then next year we'll run other stuff.
Well, so I did ask the auditor and she said technically you can't pay for some of that stuff out of general. Just shift it to water so we can keep track of those expenses. But ultimately what we need to do is seek grants and that's where they'll be working with us. Cause there's no way we can afford to do everything, but there is stuff that has to be done right now.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole list of other things that we haven't even, haven't even started to talk about. The bill with the well houses and everything, so.
How many wells do we have?
We have two.
Just two. And the one has, one has the ten, the thirty and forty millim has a.
Well, and I guess technically, there's a lot more pumps than what, really, we have two pumps on wells. What over there is a forty horse.
Uh.
I'm not for sure the one that's actually in the well over here. It's a submersible, it goes down the well and it fills our tank.
Right.
That one, it's just like any other, it's just like any other pump.
Right.
We can go back to Bill's video to watch that one.
But the pumps that we're concerned about, right, the ones that are pumping the water from the tank into the city.
Right.
That's the ones that are.
Right, that's, that's the pressure relation ones for the city. And we got four of them, two forties, a thirty and a ten. Uh, I can, we can, we can lay out base here. How much does another ten cost? Because we have a ten here and you put another ten on the other one and so to, so those kick in first before you jump up to the thirty.
Uh, I think they've designed it, they engineered it to, to function for the city.
It's, it's not designed just, just for pressure, it's designed for flow as well.
Volume, like.
That's why the, the one that's over here is a forty horse, it's our fire.
Fire, yeah.
And, and it will, it'll, it'll blow a lot of water.
Well, I was just wondering specifically, if the city's getting that thousand dollar a month being every time the thirty kicks in.
Well. Actually, when spring comes and summer, when everybody starts watering and.
It's gonna be really good anyways.
Yeah, what I'm just saying is it, it seems like there's, I know they've probably simplified a, a, you know, you know, ten, thirty and then the forty for massive, and there's, it seems like it should be a, a, a way to do an intermittent step where you're not, in the winter time, we're not getting hit with thirty kicking on. Or even during the summer time, sometimes just keeping the thirty off, be able to just two, two tens or something, I don't know. I was just.
I don't think you can keep it off.
Well, the problem was is the thirty was always on.
Yeah.
We're, we're making, we've, we've got the ten on now, so until, until people start consuming more water in the spring and summer, that will be the main drive for me here on out.
And then to bring up something that was mentioned before about meter reading.
Yes.
What is the possibility of everybody getting charged?
It's gonna be a while.
It's gonna be a while.
Part of it's a lot.
It's gonna take some time to even figure out.
Rates and everything, volumes and everything else.
Those are.
Learn how many are broken.
Those are way behind maintenance schedule also. There's, I, guy has something that there's anywhere is from ten to twenty around that don't work that he knows of.
Yeah.
And at, I don't know how much they.
How does he know that he's checking?
Well, he knows, he knows the one for my well house doesn't work because it, the reader's sitting right up on top.
I'm pretty sure he's not checking.
But.
But he does get in there sometimes.
Well, I remember anywhere, there was probably a thirty over, didn't know where they were at. Cause he was very able to travel for somebody in the area.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, that's a whole other, and that's, that's way down on our lower list of things because we're gonna have to, we got about two and a half years. Uh, Robert from, uh, West wasn't sure where the DEQ was. It's about every five years, so he was saying there was about two and a half years ago they were here. So we got about two and a half years to get.
Make a good.
Try and get squeaked up to, to power and, and I think we can do it.
I think Brian's good for the job, that we're doing it full-time and I think things will actually happen if we do that, so.
Um, we have good resources. Mountain West has been good to help sort a lot of south and even Robert died a lot.
So what's Husk doing right now? Cause he, he calls us for those grants.
He was gonna come tonight and then something happened. He's the one that called just before, but, um, yeah, so it was kind of, as I talked to everybody, we decided not to rush for the twenty-nine was the decision. And, but we're going to move forward, we have to, but we wanted to get information under, under our belts.
Didn't, uh, Mountain West talk about grants also?
Yeah, Mountain West did say that they.
There are some grants that they were aware of.
From the DEQ to, to help. It's not what's going on.
Cause from my understanding, DEQ would base all for not in good speaking terms.
Yep, that's my understanding too.
But DEQ and Mountain West are.
So we're gonna fix that.
So we're hoping to remedy some of the, the issues that have been maybe neglected. I hope.
So in line with those, are you thinking of the impact of maybe surrounding area that may, at some point be, and extending the city, but when you're making these changes, are you thinking that way or are you just thinking?
I think we do have to think.
But I'm not pretty sure we'd be going up to that point.
Thank you.
I think we do, I did think about that, but ultimately like, I.
I think basalt is just basalt, it's not really.
I don't know where it would grow to except for maybe.
Drew's house.
So when I was talking to Robert as we were trying to get this figured out, uh, a lot of times what happens, whether a small town like this has a growth spurt, so let's say Ellsworth, I can't believe Kevin would ever let that go, but, or Estblins.
No, Kevin doesn't own it.
He doesn't own it, but he's, he resists it.
Off sister, the way I understood it, cause I was contacted, it's probably been two years ago, uh, from a realtor that wanted to buy that to put in a subdivision. And I was told that his sister, um, I guess he was the rights steward or whatever.
Her name's a king.
Yeah, she would offer it to Kevin before they, it was put up for.
So in the event that.
And I would be shocked if he sold it.
Or maybe.
Christiansens or Estblins or Jansons, whatever seller property, what would happen is we'd have booster pumps out by there. Because, and that's what happens in, in all of our other little cities is you put in another, like a wellhouse and you put a booster pump in there.
So then part of the problem is too, is the sewer and we're already at.
Yeah.
Like maxed out at the sewer ponds and so then we would have to contract more so with fur and it's.
And we still haven't heard any numbers on that.
Uh, I don't think basalt's grown any type of city.
I hope not, but he did say that if we did take a growth, it would be a matter of just putting in a booster pump somewhere. And that could be as easy as like our pumps over here for the sewer, it could just be a box in the ground. And it just would increase the pressure that's coming into it and boost it to the houses that are. I'm sure it's not cheap, but it wouldn't be like a whole new well.
Well, typically if you have, so it's only one of those that base all system, you don't have to ask me any upgrades of their cost. The city's not at risk. But even Blackwood, big subdivisions to go in, you'll see them playing them two miles of water line, who's been around or getting water rights to add to the system, so I mean.
That's a contractor's.
That's a contractor's problem. So, you know, if something happened and somebody was needing a booster pump, that's their, that's their doing.
Because technically all we can do is supply. Seven PSI to this point.
Right.
They're all gear, but.
You know, if something happens, I mean, obviously we need to work to a vision, but you know, it's not like they can demand the city to supply water, you don't have it, you don't have it.
Yeah. Really not concerned.
And back to the county commissioner issues, as soon as they get a backbone and actually change the minimum lot sizes to a larger number, he might have some growth, but.
We're, we're, I said, I'm in zone information and we're strongly carrying to.
Well, I've, I thought they needed to do it for years and they just put bets last week and started talking to, you know, the developers. So, and I don't think we'd have a county commissioner. But there is talk to, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's always a good question. So with DEQ grants, who is going after those?
I would think Husk. Well, and Robert Giles said that he could do like small ones.
So is Husk on this, is he working on it?
I think he's working on it.
Yeah, but like, so missing this, like we're kind of pushing it out a year before we even get the grant. So when that comes around again, I, I'm trying to remember, was it?
It should have been started last year on all this stuff and, and so it's kind of delayed a little too long.
So why didn't he start earlier?
Because the previous.
Cause people weren't aware or?
Well, he, it was, I thought he was supposed to be working on, I don't have that.
He was working on a sewer one.
Well, no, he was supposed to be working on, uh, the, that hundred thousand dollar one he mentioned like last September or August.
LTAC and he did work on that. But that's for like roads and street fines and something.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we've got a year before we can even apply for the grants, that's.
No, we'll apply within this year, but we wouldn't hit the money total.
So is that similar to the funding grants that you get?
Probably, so there's like.
You can't buy anything prior to you get the award, you know that?
Similar, similar.
Well, it depends on the.
To repair what you're going to, but you can repair more after you got the grant. Cause I don't think they will pay you for improvements you made prior to being on the grant. That's what they are for.
So if it's DEQ, some federal grants will let you spend ninety days before you actually get the funding, but it's on you. And so if they allow pre-work spending, you can do that.
Well, I really, when we talked to Husk, she understands grant.
So, yeah, when he goes to do this, someone needs to ask him if we can use our time as match.
Yeah, she was saying that, you know, like.
Because we understand we have to put up our own money.
Did you know?
So.
Some did, yes.
Why can't we use something?
You mean without for like the study money for?
Yeah, the study money, not necessarily, but I have seen quite a few of the, yeah, the in-kind stuff that will help. You know, so time on the back of them, they're already there to be some in-kind stuff. Just depends on the grant.
So you wanna make sure that Husk does that if we have in-kind that we have to need. So what are we gonna do in the meantime to get this money to fix these repairs? Are we looking for, obviously we're looking to increase.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do another increase.
Do we know how much we have to increase?
Um, well, it's only a certain amount that we can increase.
Well, we just did the cost of living, but we'd have to have a public hearing for a big one. And, you know, the rate really should be at seventy-five, where do you wanna put it?
So let's, I don't, I honestly don't even know what to be checking on.
Uh, the, well, four, well, it just went up. So it's been thirty-nine and now it's gonna go up to like forty fifty-six? Well, it's four percent up there. I don't have my phone, so I'm just, yeah. I mean, it was like a drop in the bucket, we never had to do it.
Go to fourteen.
But.
So now it needs to go up to seventy-five from forty something.
Yeah.
I don't think you can go that much outward to make people happy though, catch up.
Well, we'll get a letter from Mountain West and.
We're gonna have to prepare.
It's a tough one, when you know, when you like everything so long.
It catches up.
Yeah.
So basically to rip off this band-aid and just deal with it.
Yeah, the pants been kicked out of the road for two years.
Yes, kind of, because even if, even if we fix stuff now, as time goes on, we're still not enough money to continue to maintain all this stuff correctly. So that has to come up so that it can, that they, they make it, the water department's like a business, you have to, you have to.
So when will we have this letter?
It will be coming shortly, before next year.
So when is the letter going out to everybody?
I have, I put it in this next month.
And then, so then the next city council, we, well, they decide to put out the notice for thirty days and then on public hearing in thirty days, we're raising the rate?
If.
Does that, why we do it?
If everybody agrees to it, I don't know, we can talk about it.
Well, public hearing, you have to give them the opportunity and then it would be, that it would be based after that, the next meeting.
So you know, you could, you could make the decision and say, I'll just public hear now.
Oh yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah, you have to publish the notice though, so you have to go back to the notice. But once you have your to-do list or priority list, that'll give you a good idea of where you ask. I think you need those from.
So we're looking at about two months before we can raise the rates, right?
That's okay.
If you're on justification for her to be expensive.
Right. I was just looking for kind of like a time story that will be on the calendar.
Yeah.
Cause we don't wanna keep pushing it out because that's been done way too much.
We can just, like really the sewer should be too, but we can just do water for right now or.
Yeah. So, yeah. Probably that, each of you should probably pick key people within the community and sell them on that. So when, so when I'm bellyaching, like, and you'll see.
I've already been collecting my seeds. When people come in together, Bill, and we talk about the rate increase, I've already been more than here to.
You keep people through the community and I, I don't mind to tell you, to get them prepared to rack you on it so that when the complaints do, because trust me, even though people, you've been telling people we're gonna raise rates, they won't compute until they get the letter. Or you have a hearing, you know, and, and then usually the loudest person or the angriest is the one that takes up your time.
Okay.
We was climbing and zoning last night until three thirty on morning.
Oh.
The people argued. And you have them to speak.
You can't shut them off?
You can put a timeline, you can put a timeline on it.
Yeah, and I would do that. You can put a five minute timeframe and just set it on your clock and.
Do the timer?
They can finish their statements, but they can't take another three to four minutes or more. But I would, I would prepare for that if you're gonna go up to from thirty-five to seventy-five.
It's gonna hurt.
Or do you do it in two small increments?
Like you're gonna have people, you're gonna have people that bellyache over five cents and people are gonna bellyache over the rest of it. So I think the people that are gonna complain are gonna complain whether you do it in one or two. So you might as well just rip the band-aid off and do it in one and get your complaints over with.
Yeah, we'll have.
And we'll say it's frank.
Well, I was just gonna say.
That's why I have you.
I hope that that's not why they think they're getting.
Skateboard.
I found out.
Well, I just, I'm glad that there's gonna be a list. Cause I, I don't want people to think that, that everything's gonna go up because you hired people. From, actually the things that I can walk around the team.
Thirty horsepower took it down. We only have the forty over there that doesn't work. I find it, nothing else. Uh, now we have three working, uh, and only on our hall right now, so.
And I will tell you, I get nothing but positive feedback that you're gonna be okay.
I hope so. That is a concern, but I am, I'm good if you would ask. But like I say, this last couple of weeks, I really feel like I jumped into the deep end of the pool.
That's a bloody pool.
Every time Robert texts me, oh, that one.
I'm just glad you found it before they were.
Before it died.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. Actually, we went in when we first, when him and I first came in and went around and checked stuff out and found that the generators didn't work. Why doesn't this work? How come this doesn't work? And that's what started everything for the like.
Oh boy. And we were expecting a big storm that day.
Yeah, that big storm that we had, not this last one, the one back in Taylor.
Yeah.
It was right before that. In fact, it was that weekend we walked around and if, if the power. if, if the power didn't come out, we'd have been hours, hours figuring some of this stuff out and getting, well then, if the power goes out to our sewer, you've only got a few hours and then you're starting to back. Yep, you are basically back.
We just dealt with that.
I think that's the direction it goes.
I wonder if that's what, we have, our sewer has backed up, I want to say every year for the last oh gosh, it's been on like a game number and flooded erasing and like
I think that's, that's where it wants to go. If, I think that side of town gets hit first if it backs up too far.
Yeah.
But we have between Curtis and I, the pump is closer, the, the generator is closer to the pump now. It runs.
That's good to know.
The tires are aired up. And it's ready to go into service if we need it, so.
And he will be starting that pump at least once in a while to be sure everything's operational manually. Uh, that generator's twenty-four years old and it has six hours on it.
What?
And the original fuel. As far as we can tell.
These sort of get fully diesel.
And like learn their lots of this.
So that's, that's one of the projects, do you know, it's a whole other doesn't need to be
Bill we got it.
But we're gonna try and pump all the fuel out, we'll run it in the equipment and put fresh
You know, I, I started up the, the generator and it run like a cop. But I haven't been starting in a long time. So, it's okay, we're good.
I'll take people's crap, but there's some stuff I won't take, so let's try to keep that on race.
Maybe see if the power went out. We had no power for the water pump, but if we did have power at the wellhouse, the generator wasn't ready to go pump to the sewer ponds, so anyways.
We're good, sir.
Thank you.
So those are things I would find out, other things, so, destroying experiences.
We got it.
And things if you have, we don't.
All right, one quick question. Name word on Kay.
It's up to Kay, he's, uh, he's his own man.
He hasn't said anything.
He isn't here today. Uh, Robin has decided that we're not gonna give him a breakup call if he can't show up, then we've made multiple times and he can't show up and we'll see what happens. So that's, that's his deal if he wants to do arguments or not, and if he can't show up, then we'll need to get someone else up. So we'll give it a little time, it's okay. Anyways, I think it helps him to be kind of alive still.
Yeah, that's the hard part.
That's the hard part, but there also is a duty in it and he's signed up for it, so. We'll just give it just a little more time.
All right.
Okay. Anything else?
Move to a turn.
Okay. Cause we're done.